Good afternoon. My name is Raymond Skinner and I'm chairman of the DCHA Board of Commissioners, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is our first meeting since early July, so I hope everyone had a very enjoyable summer, had a chance to hang out with family, do some good stuff. This is our regular monthly meeting, being held today on September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. This meeting is being held via Zoom video conferencing, and the board is here in person, and the time is one oh one P M. At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to allow time for personal reflection. Thank you. So as I said, this is our regular monthly board meeting, and we have invited members of the public to sign up to speak via our website, and those who would just like to view the meeting can do so live via the DCHA website, linked to our Facebook Live page. The Board of Commissioners welcomes input on matters of public concern and offers you today the opportunity to express your views during the public testimony portion of this meeting. However, we're required, as it was specified by certain rules of decorum, to allow the board to complete its business. For this virtual meeting, DCHA asked that you remain muted until you are instructed to speak. Members of the public cannot engage in any disruptive conduct or loud threatening use of language during the board meetings. This includes any loud outbursts or shouting during times when you have not been invited to speak. Anyone who violates these rules will be removed from this virtual meeting. Serious or repeated violations of the rules may result in your being barred from speaking at future board meetings. However, we do appreciate your interest in the business before the board today, and we thank you in advance for overriding by these rules of conduct. So before I continue with the meeting, I wanted to bring up something of importance that really took place over the summer. Since we last met, there was a major change in the underlying authority that allows our board to function. You may recall that the Stabilization and Reform Board, known as the STAR Board, was originally authorized for two years, that was to end in December of two thousand and twenty-four. Since then, the council passed two emergency bills that allowed us to continue to operate past that December date. Then, but, and this is really the important point, on July twenty-eighth, the council passed the Housing Authority Resident Empowerment Emergency Act of two thousand and twenty-five, known as Bill twenty-six dash three-three-three. That legislation effectively did away with the STAR Board, and as of July twenty-eighth, says that members of the STAR Board shall become interim commissioners of the interim board, and that they shall continue to serve until they are reappointed or replaced in accordance with procedures laid out in the legislation. There is one major difference from the STAR Board, and that is Commissioners Clay and Burbidge, who were non-voting members, now will be voting members of the interim board. So just to reiterate, today we are functioning as an interim Board of Commissioners under the July twenty-eighth emergency legislation with nine voting members. And with that, I'll ask for a roll call to determine if we have a quorum, a quorum being five members.
Denise Gladstone. Thank you. Rosa Burbidge. Leroy Clay.
Present.
Thank you. Jim Dickerson.
Here.
Thank you. Ronnie Harris.
Present.
Thank you. Chris Murphy.
Present.
Thank you. Jennifer Reed.
Teresa Silla.
Present.
Thank you. Raymond Skinner.
Here. Okay, thank you. So the first item of business is approval of the minute for July ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, Board of Commissioners meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let the minutes of the July twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-five meeting stand as presented. Next, we'll go to our Executive Director, Rick Paul. Mr. Mettevun.
Okay, Chairman. Welcome back, everyone. Chairman dedicated, we did not have a meeting in August, and as Fred has shown so over the last few years, that we end up with a lot of resolutions that next meeting, right? So we got a lot of work in front of us, but I'm excited to talk about the fact operation we've been doing extremely well on the voucher side of the house, where ninety-nine percent utilization, which is extremely we're extremely happy about, so was the public housing side of the house went up to eighty-five percent. I'm pretty sure there'll be some questions on the numbers and the movement of the units. Carol has been working mostly with the code as well as HUD to talk about what we've been pulling offline and why, and this has more to do with anticipation of the IRB bond process and activities that will be coming later in the year, and that we will provide more information to the board between now and the next board meeting in October and September, just so you can have an understanding of all of the movement. But Carol is here to talk a little bit about, if you guys have any questions about some of the movement that's taking place so far, just for the record with the public. Do you want to, so I don't know if you guys have any questions on that first?
Yeah, sure, go do it now. Yeah, I would just, it'd be great if Carolyn could sort of walk us through, and I know there's so many different moving factors, things going up, things going down, and I also know that the data we get, because it has to be, is a little bit of a time dated, because you give us August numbers, and here we are talking September. So I fully recognize there's a lot of moving parts, but we'd love just to try to understand sort of some of what those moving parts are.
Well, I'll start. And so just comparing, I guess, the front page one forty-eight and the leasing summary from July and August is probably the easiest way. So generally, the total ACC units, we see an increase of forty, and this is because of the new Park Morton units we had to bring online. Then it takes you to the next row, the available units excluding HUD approved. As Director Pettigrew just stated, we are taking units offline for the first bond properties that Carolyn is working with HUD on. So you see that difference of fifty-five difference between July and August. That's because those units at those properties, as they become vacant, will go offline, if not already offline, if they were. And the next line item, as you'll see, are leased units, that with a decrease of forty-three. So again, if we brought forty Park Morton new units on, those haven't been leased up yet in the process, so that forty-three reduction from July and August represents those new forty units, and then, of course, three other units vacated. So that's kind of how, that's, well, not kind of, that is how those lines work. Any detailed questions for that?
Well, so I
Could I jump in before you? Please, just so that the calculation, so if you look at the total offline units we have in our universe, it's not shown here, but it's one thousand six hundred twenty-four units. If you add that with the number of leased units, five thousand two hundred thirty-seven, and if you go to the vacant unit count for August at eight hundred eighty-three, that will equal up to the seven thousand seven hundred forty-four. So you want to stay within the August column, so it'll make sense.
I think one of the reasons I get confused, I think, is because, and this is not, nobody's anything wrong, but sometimes you will tell us things in the text that has happened, but it may not be in the numbers we're seeing yet, because there's a delay between when the numbers are happening and whether some of the things you're telling us are happening, so that may be part of it. I guess the thing I was struggling with was if we took, if we've taken some or all of this units and the seven properties that we're taking offline for the IRB modernizations, I would have thought the number would have dropped more, but I think what you told me a moment ago was that those numbers already hit. So they're, we're not seeing here, because this only goes through July, but if we looked at June, we might have seen a much higher number of available units, and that's when the fall was either from like May to June or June to July or something like that.
Correct, and some were already offline, you know, so if they were already offline, that was already in counts previously. Carolyn's been working with HUD over the last several months, so each month you'll see a small drop. So they, you know, HUD has, we have to put the request in, HUD approves it, then you'll start seeing the reduction.
Okay, okay, and just one other sort of related question that we can move on, I don't want to belabor this. I think there was a reference to some of those vacant units being used for relocation when we're doing. How does that work? The units that we're using for relocation, do we not, we don't take them offline?
There's a possibility if they're, if they've moved out and now we're holding it for that reason, they allow you to take those offline. When we need them for relocation, we'll put them back online.
Okay, and then it would add one to the numerator and one to the denominator, one to one. Okay, all right, I wanted to make sure we weren't doing something strange where we were adding a unit to the numerator, but it wasn't added to the denominator.
You'll always see the math will match.
Okay, terrific, that's, I appreciate the explanation, thank you.
And just one other big question, Murphy, it's actually nine properties in the first tranche, that's seven.
It's at seven.
Yeah, but I think it's seven, maybe I'm wrong, I think it's only seven of the nine that we're taking offline.
That we did in, that we did in August, so that is correct.
You mean, take it off, oh, take it off.
Okay, okay. No, 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 I mean
So that's where it can be read, and then, yeah.
Yeah, you want to see different numbers for September, because we just did another request.
Another two more.
One more.
One more.
A couple of other highlights I want to touch on before we get to morning. I know that team is working with Commissioner Seela on some language for preference for homelessness, right? So you've gotten a draft of, or some language, preliminary language?
Yes, relative to the public housing, relative to public housing opportunities. I was hoping to also have a conversation about housing choice voucher opportunities, is that a possibility? Can we also entertain that conversation?
It's always a possibility.
We can talk about anything.
I know, right?
So let's hold this discussion
Okay.
until we get to
Outside of that, we talked with the units. I had a very good meeting about a month ago with President UDC and their board chair sessions. They want to partner with the agency to help us enhance our workforce development program. And so they're extremely excited, I was excited to go meet with them, they're committed to it. They also want to talk about some development opportunities, because he's trying to expand the campus. So I thought that was a very good meeting, and I put him in touch with various staff members so that we can continue that dialogue. But I'm excited about the workforce piece of it, because we really do want to enhance it beyond just plumbing and electricians. We want people to get soft skills, some residents, somebody want to be executive assistants, they want to be nurses. So I think this is a great opportunity to partner with UDC, and they seem to be excited about partnering with us as well. That's great. Aside from that, I think we should dive in, we got a bigger agenda right?
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the Executive Director? The Commissioners who are online?
It's not a question, but it really is just a compliment to Anton. The voucher numbers are through the roof, I mean, they're amazing, and he and his team really deserve a lot of credit.
There's another update that deserves applause, but isn't a resolution. I think you, the team presented to the Committee on Resident Services about all of the fantastic work that went to get off the generator power.
Oh, yeah.
Was a really important development. I think that should be featured in your executive report so that people can get applause.
Yeah, that, that room, right? Talking online. Yeah, her and her team did an excellent job keeping lights going almost a year, was it a year, almost a year? Yeah, but also kudos to the residences, so we're going to do something special for them when we do their summer event, we go to the community event, I said I want to do something a little more special for them, because they endured for almost a year. They generated, but we stayed in touch, we tried to provide the best customer service we could the entire time, but the residences are shot on about, you know, working with us and being extremely patient under their circumstances.
I'd like to also add, we did a tour of Park Morton, I live, that's been my neighbors for fifty-five years. We've been neighbors, had a lot of folks who've lived there, part of our work in the community, and the place is incredible, it's just really, really, really beautiful, and a great place to live and raise your family and be neighbors, et cetera.
Yeah.
So congratulations.
And there's a ribbon cutting, I believe, October the tenth.
Yeah, so I was, I was on the tour with Commissioners, and as he said, this place is really beautiful, they've done really great design work, the appointments are just top-notch. And the design, the interior design was done, I believe, by Black Women's was a material designer for Pia. Giving her some Well, she just did a fantastic job in laying out the design and the appointments, accoutrements, if you will, at Park Morton, so it's really very impressive, so we get a chance to go by and see.
That's great.
Okay, so if there are no further questions for the Executive Director, we're then going to move to our testimony, resident testimony first, and then the remainder of the public testimony. So again, each person has three minutes to provide their testimony, and you can talk about the resolutions or any issues that you have with the authority.
So first, we're going to call Aquarius Van Gosery. As a reminder, it's star six, unmute yourself, and we'll send you the request to promote you so you can speak. Aquarius Van Gosery. I'm going to move forward. I believe I have Katia, Julia Chambers. Ms. Chambers. Moving forward. I have Michelle Ellison. Michelle Ellison. I've got some of the issues resolved. Next, I have Ken Council. Ken Council, we're promoting you, star six, so that you can speak. I'm going to move forward. Next, I have Pat Malloy. And I have your request, Commissioner Council, you decline. Pat Malloy.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Before I give my testimony, I would just like to say thank you to Andre Johnson, Brian Harris, and Vashad Tyler. I've been following you all with your community outreach, with doing the events on the different properties, and that's a wonderful, wonderful idea. Now to my testimony. My name is Patricia Malloy, former Lincoln Heights Residency Council President, now a project-based voucher holder. Today, I am here to speak on the way the public comment period regarding the two thousand and twenty-six Movement to Work Annual Plan was held on August the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. I signed up to speak, but never received the link to speak. Before the meeting, I had to call Daniel with Empower DC to get the link. During the public comment period, over thirty people had signed up to speak, but my concern was, did these people, why didn't they get the link? Because I feel some of the people that signed up never got the link like I did. The people that did speak did not comment on the amended plan. They mainly spoke, they mainly were voucher holders or potential voucher holders with complaints on the way the agency was communicating with them. Some said that they never got callbacks from their case managers. It wasn't anything dealing with the Movement to Work Plan. My question is, what can be done to make sure that when you do have these comment periods on the resolutions, that they actually speak on the resolutions, not speak on what individual employees are not doing? That was really my concern and take on this. Not only that, with all the resolutions that's in place today for the Board of Commissioners meeting, they're really confusing. And it's just something that we really need to take in consideration. I know the board was on recess for August, maybe that should have been an emergency meeting. This is just my take. But again, Director Pettigrew, thank you so much for all that you've been doing for Lincoln Heights and the code. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Aquarius.
Next, we have Karen Saddles. Karen Saddles. I'm going to move forward. Next, we have Linda Brown. Ms. Brown, we're sending up your request to promote you, star six, to unmute yourself, so that you can present your testimony. Linda Brown.
Good morning, everyone, can you hear me?
We can.
We can hear you.
Okay, good morning, my name is Linda Brown, and the first thing I like to speak about, I apologize, I live in Ward Six in Greenlee Senior Building, and I am calling about recertification because I recertified two years ago, and then I had to turn around and recertify again in July, and by the time I got this month's bill, my bill was that I owe for my rent was one thousand and four hundred dollars, and I've tried to contact someone so that we could straighten this out, because I know I do not owe that much. So I'd like to get someone to call me so we can straighten this out or set up an appointment to come in to have this discussion. That's one, and the other is we, the building that I live in has been approved by HUD for Section eighteen for in-house vouchers. So I'm wondering if the office is going to come out and explain exactly what that means and what that entitles for the residents of Greenlee Senior. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, we will have someone call you, we have your contact information about the recertification. And for the Section eighteen, we had meetings.
We had meetings already, it was before, but we're going to ramp up now, now we're in DePaul.
Okay.
So they'll be here for us real soon.
Okay.
Next, we have Carl Smith. Carl Smith. I'm going to move forward. Next, we have Donna Towns. Donna Towns. Chairman, that completes our resident testimony. No, she actually declined, she did. Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was this morning, so we're going to move forward to the non-resident. First, I'm going to call Hofi Robinson.
Hi, how are you doing?
Good afternoon.
Um, I'm a veteran, I've had a choice voucher. Excuse me, first of all, let me say hello to all the board and good afternoon. I'm a veteran, I've had my choice voucher for approximately two years. It's been a hit or miss thing as far as the unit being inspected or and the liaison between the actual landlords and the inspection team, so I missed out on a couple of properties that I wanted to live in. I was in transition and even though, with that being said, I would like to let you all know that the influx of homeless people and homeless veterans is substantial, and you all are doing an excellent job. I don't really have anything too negative to say, I just would like to chime in a little bit, I think some of these residents that you all have need workforce help, as you spoke about, like maybe not just plumbing and electric school, but also being a part of the inspection teams or becoming apprentices as far as doing building inspections, because the shared amount of vouchers that you all have and the units that you have are substantial. And I just think it'll be a quicker turnaround if you had maybe a larger inspection team, and I know y'all took a hit as far as how the offices split up between Seventh Street and down near close to the HUD, so like I said, I won't go into a negative light, but like I said, it took almost two years for me to finally get into a place, and the place that I'm in now, I'm extremely happy, and I just want to let you all know that I appreciate you all, and that's all I would like to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Robinson.
No problem at all.
So I'm going to, I'm going to pause here and come back to Karen Saddles. Miss Saddles, we're sending you a request to promote you in star six, so that you can speak.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
I wanted to find out, because I haven't been able to get a, I needed to find out about the fair hearing process. Where do I locate that at? And my other question was about the Move to Work, because I haven't heard any update about, you know, what was finalized, what was approved or whatever. I had other testimony, but I can send it in. I just need to maybe get some answers about the Move to Work piece, because I had some questions that I wanted to ask about. So how can I obtain that?
So, right, information on the Moving to Work is on our website. On, and I think in terms of OFH, I think someone can reach out to you to give you that, you know, that information if you're looking for hearing and fair hearing information, I'm not, I'm not sure if that's on our website. So hopefully it is, but I just don't know. Yeah, but someone can reach out and give you all that information.
Okay, so one last thing. I feel that
Um, uh, I, I feel that, um, Commissioner Blackston has done such a wonderful job on, um, as far as residents are concerned. And I wanted to know whether you would be, um, you all will be, um, having other residents, um, that would represent some issues for residents because I'm very concerned about special needs for public housing people. And I, I don't feel that is being, um, really addressed the way that I can see. But, um, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm very curious about the formation of the board and, and how residents are going to be represented in a more even way. Maybe you can answer that for me.
It's, so, uh, as you know, there are currently two residents, uh, on the board. And under the, the new legislation that I spoke of at the beginning, uh, there will continue to be two, uh, residents on the board. And this time they will both be voting members of the board.
Okay, so, so, um, as far as the lever, I mean, uh, as far as the representation as it's, that is necessary for that, those two special categories, with, well, one of the special categories to me is, um, uh, special needs. We have a lot of people with special needs in public housing that I don't feel is getting the proper attention. So, um, uh, I, I would like to, um, know if you have any new laws or legislation that would protect the interests of those people. It's already existing, you know, the HEPA law exists. But how, how is, um, housing is going, is going to, um, actually, um, make sure that, um, people that live in housing are protected by that. Thank you.
In the
Thank you, Ms. Settle.
Ms. Saddles, in the chat is a link to the MTW, if, um, the MTW information you requested and someone can reach out to you. A fair housing question.
Okay.
Your hearings, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next, we're gonna go back to our non-resident testimony. We have Renee Moore. Renee Moore. I'm gonna move forward. Next, we have Lynn Amino. Amino, you can correct me. I saw you.
Hi, Lynn Amino. Hi, just, um, good afternoon, board members. I am the Director of Advocacy for Friendship Place. We help over five thousand individuals experiencing homelessness each year with a wide range of programs and housing and services in the DC region. I also serve for Friendship Place as a full council member on the ICH and as co-chair of the Housing Solutions Work Group. I'm here to ask you to prioritize housing choice vouchers and public housing units for those currently experiencing chronic and literal homelessness. Our unsheltered citizens are facing major crises in the face of federal action. The DC FY twenty-six budget dramatically underfunds these resources for individuals experiencing homelessness outside of temporary shelter. We commend DHS for finding a hundred fifty additional shelter beds, but our recent pit count um, showed seven hundred and sixty-four individuals, which we know is a vast undercount, experiencing literal homelessness each night. The FY twenty-six budget lacks desperately needed resources like rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing for individuals and starts in just two weeks. Um, the additional temporary beds and new bridge housing are coming online and they're helpful, but they do not create the longevity needed for individuals to experience long-term stability and safety and to begin to repair their lives. Homelessness has been a priority in the assignment of federal vouchers and housing resources in the past, and we're asking you to return to that preference given the current emergency in DC. As DCHA has the access to longer-term resources lacking in the DC budget and unsheltered DC residents find themselves at risk for encampment clearings and relocation, it makes sense to temporarily prioritize these resources while advocates and providers pursue, pursue additional city resources. We thank DCHA for its recent participation in the strategic group trying to improve how quickly voucher recipients are able to lease up. We hope it will lead to significant improvements in the voucher process, including faster inspection and eligibility determinations. Please move forward with the recommendations and MOU. The voucher approvals and inspections are still taking too long and we'd like to see that improve. And thank you for your support in ending homelessness.
Thank you, Ms. Amino.
Next, we have Kelly McShane.
Good afternoon. Uh, I am Kelly Sweeney-McShane. I'm the President and CEO of Community of Hope. We're a fairly qualified health center and a provider of services for about sixteen hundred families and individuals experiencing homelessness across the continuum of care. I also serve on the ICH and I'm co-chair of the Strategic Planning Committee. I last spoke to the board in March of twenty twenty-five about the need to conduct a process review in order to remove barriers and speed up the time from application to lease up. I'm pleased to report that the DC Housing Authority hosted two half-day sessions with representatives from DHS, service providers, and people with lived experience on July sixteenth and seventeenth. Director Pedegrue worked closely with several providers, including myself, to make those days happen, including hiring a consultant to facilitate those days. While I was unable to attend due to a pre-planned vacation, my staff reported that the meetings were very productive. They showed that there was good conversation, agreements on the need to reduce, um, unnecessary barriers and increase communications, and agreement on several key steps. Everyone was very receptive to feedback on process changes that made sense and where there were changes that simply couldn't be made for one reason or another, that was made clear as well. The consultant was very knowledgeable about the codes governing the process and could identify if things were only set up in a certain way because someone said so and not because of an actual requirement. Almost two months later, I'm eager to hear about next steps, timeline, and communication. We've received a summary report from the process reviews, which includes a long list of recommendations. Unfortunately, it does not clearly identify the recommendations that were agreed upon already, what areas need further conversation, what the next steps for implementation are, who is responsible, and a timeline. We have a hold on our calendars for another half-day meeting on September seventeenth, and I'm hopeful that we can get to next steps at that time. I urge the Housing Authority to move forward expeditiously with implementing recommendations on way to reduce barriers, communicating that information to all stakeholders, and developing metrics to document improvement. Now is the time, and I feel like it is also past time. There is even more urgency to make these improvements happen and prioritize clients in the continuum of care, given budget pressures and federal actions in DC. I would also note that it's concerning to me that the proposed administrative plan shortens the time to use a voucher to a hundred and twenty days when we have yet to improve and shorten the lease-up process. We're reviewing the document and will provide additional feedback in the, the comment period. I, with other providers, are eager to be partners in this process. We look forward to hearing about next steps as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shane.
Next, we have
Can, can I, can we just, I'd just love to hear what the take is on that.
It was me. I thought it was started at one eighty.
It's been one eighty, but I think the proposed change was to, to one twenty.
Well, and I don't, I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to pin you down on this specific issue. I'm just sort of wondering the general approach to follow up.
On the admin plan, well, there's a public hearing on the admin plan. We, um, yes, next week.
No, no, no. So they're meeting next, yeah, next week.
And then that should get to the final recommendations for the team.
So that's gonna hold? We can have that meeting?
Oh, that meeting is.
Okay.
I don't think it's a hold. I thought it was confirmed.
I thought it was confirmed.
Yeah.
No, um, the facilitator wrote back to say that there might be a need to move it.
Maybe in a different room, but that the
We thought it was gonna be delayed. And I think that is what is informing.
Yeah, I was informed yesterday that it's, it's happening on the seventeenth.
Okay, so we're
And it was a matter of which room you were gonna use to help the meeting.
So we're confirming to Kelly McShane that this meeting is happening September seventeenth as
As I know, yeah, right?
Okay. Yep.
Yes, we can.
There you go.
So they're just getting the location.
Okay.
Okay, that's great. And, um, Kelly, I appreciate the, the feedback on the initial work. It's really encouraging to hear all the great follow-up and would certainly encourage you, or you're designated, to come back next month and let us know. Uh, you know, hopefully it'll be a similarly glowing report, um, about how this most recent meeting will go. So come, come on back.
Great, thank you. Next, we have Abby Speck. Speck. I think, I'm sorry about that. Thank you for your questions.
Hi, yeah, it's Abby Sipek. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Abby Sipek and I'm the Chief of Staff at Everyone Home DC. Everyone Home DC works with individuals and families at risk of or experiencing homelessness, and we envision the District of Columbia as a thriving and diverse community where everyone has access to safe, comfortable, and affordable homes. First, I'd like to thank the Housing Authority for its clear commitment to collaboration and working with the homeless services community to improve voucher processing times. I was last here in February to raise awareness about our experience with long processing times for LRSP voucher applications. Since then, DCHA Director Pedegrue and DHS Director Pierre, along with their teams, have acted with urgency to conduct a facilitated process review to discuss identified obstacles within the voucher process and develop solutions to help our system meet the goal of leasing up households within ninety days. We look forward to continued partnership with both DCHA and DHS to ensure the implementation of these recommendations and on the reporting of metrics to track, track progress towards our goal of getting people into housing quickly. Back in February, my testimony noted the threats of harmful executive orders from the federal government targeting people experiencing homelessness. Today, these threats have turned into a reality. People who are living outside are facing unprecedented scrutiny and have very few housing options. DC's FY twenty-six budget includes no new housing interventions for single adults and just three hundred and thirty-six vouchers for families. Both of these numbers are unacceptable and will make homelessness in DC worse and set back the progress we've made. I'm here today to urge DCHA to consider implementing a continuum of care or COC preference for the Housing Choice Voucher Program and for public housing. I submitted comments about enacting a COC preference to the ACOP back in July, and today I'll share some highlights from those comments. Our community has made, uh, tremendous progress in transforming our homeless services system and achieving results. When we have housing for people to exit homelessness, our system works. By implementing a COC preference, DCHA can help end homelessness for hundreds more individuals and families in the district. These housing resources could be allocated to those who are currently accessing or who have accessed, um, homeless services as documented in the Homeless Management Information System. The implementation of a COC preference would not only help more people exit homelessness, um, but would also help DCHA with the tenant identification process. These are people who are already known to our system and are generally engaged with case managers through outreach, shelter, prevention, and drop-in center services. These same case managers could assist with completing applications and working alongside them, hopefully through a very speedy voucher process. Um, DCHA has an opportunity to leverage its resources and help make major strides in ending homelessness in the district, and I hope that this board will consider implementing a COC preference to make this happen. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Sipek.
Next, we have Daniel Delpilago. The reminder star six so you can speak.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon.
Uh, my name is Daniel Delpilago, um, and I work with Empower DC. We work with, uh, public housing residents and voucher holders all around the city. Uh, today I have a couple of, uh, questions and, and some general concerns just because I, I realize that, you know, the, the agenda alone for today is overwhelming. There is so much happening as it relates to public housing and subsidized housing in the district that I think communications have to be really strong. Uh, we've heard, uh, the confusion around moving to work. We've heard about what's happening with the Section eighteen, um, uh, approvals and, and the need to know more. That was over a year ago now that those applications were submitted. I think it would be important to refresh people's memories at those properties, why they were submitted, why they were chosen, um, and how it compares to the, um, IRBs, the, the revenue bond renovations that are planned, uh, how all those, uh, work together. I think the other big important thing is, uh, some of the federal changes that we've seen. We've seen, uh, the new administration or the administration, um, put out some executive orders, um, requesting, reporting specifically from DCHA to the federal government around immigration status, around criminal activity. And I think tenants of, of public housing voucher holders, because it includes, um, private landlords there, really need to know what all of this means. And, uh, I, I fully understand that you all may not know what that means, uh, at this point in time because it's being rushed and it's not being, being, uh, very clear. But I think it is really important for tenants to know of all these potential changes that are happening. Um, uh, we see, uh, ACOP is being extended again. You know, it's, uh, administrative plan was kind of essentially dropped on our laps. We, we, we weren't expecting that to come down so quick. So now both tenants, advocates, and folks who care, uh, uh, about that are, are rushing to review it and provide, uh, comments, uh, which, which we hope to do so. Um, so just, uh, you know, a, a request for a stronger communication around the many changes, um, that are happening to, uh, at the agency and of course, uh, to residents. Lastly, I have a question regarding, uh, the, the tenant representation. I know, uh, Mr. Counsel, Kenneth Counsel, has been sworn in as a president of the Citywide Advisory Board. And just curious to ask why he's not sitting here as part of this body, as I understand, uh, because the Rental Act has not been voted in yet, that he should be sitting at this, at, at this table. Um, I, I may be mistaken on that, but, but some clarity, uh, on that as I think the, the current representative does not hold that position anymore. Uh, so thank you for the time to testify.
Just, uh, Daniel, on that last point, just to be clear, as I mentioned, the emergency bill that was passed by the council that is not part of the Rental Act, uh, is what holds now. And in that bill, it says that the existing, uh, board members, uh, will continue until they are, um, uh, replaced.
So it's the, the very existing individual, just to clarify, the very existing individuals or folks who hold those positions and titles?
No, the, the individuals. It, it refers to the people who are currently on the board, uh, holding over as, as the, uh, as the interim commissioner. And again, that may change once the Rental Act is passed because again, the, uh, um, uh, there, there is in the Rental Act, um, a similar, uh, legislation that, uh, to the, the emergency bill that was passed. Uh, so if that passes, it may change.
Thank you for that clarification.
Next, we're gonna go to Andy Wosnick.
Hi, good afternoon. Can you all hear me and see me?
And.
Okay, um, members of the board, Director Pedegrue, thank you very much for hearing my testimony. My name is Andy Wosnick, Policy Director at Miriam's Kitchen, Homeless Services Provider with the Mission of Ending Chronic Homelessness in the District. I'm here today to speak about the in-person review process that was held in July, although, and I will be repeating this, some of the, Ms. McShane's points, um, and the current timeline and the scheduling of inspections and the general emergency that unhoused folks are facing in DC right now. Um, first, I would like to begin by thanking Director Pedegrue and Director Shaw and their team for their responsiveness and for organizing and participating in the process review of the local program. Uh, and whenever I reach out with a concern or issue, it is very quickly addressed, and I am greatly appreciative of that. I also want to acknowledge the efforts that have been made in addition to the process review to improve collaboration with DHS and providers and timelines as well. Overall, uh, I believe the, I, I felt the process review held July seventeenth and eighteenth was positive. And I felt as though even if just one or two of the issues that we had discussed, uh, would come to, uh, uh, which we had discussed and come to agreements on came to fruition, we'd be better off as a system. Um, you know, as mentioned, we are about two months out from that and we are very eagerly anticipating sort of like the meeting on the seventeenth and to see these things implicated, um, implemented as quickly as possible. Uh, I share Ms. McShane's concerns that, you know, a number of things that were clearly agreed to in the room are now just recommendations and it is no longer clear which are recommendations and which are things that we are, that we had solid agreements to in the room. And so want to make sure that we clarify that in our meeting on the seventeenth and, uh, make sure that we implement those as quickly as possible. Um, the process review itself was really focused, though, on the last third of the voucher to match lease-up timeline. That is the receipt of the RFPA, um, packet up to lease up. Um, and the goal, stated goal in that part of the review was that we get that timeline down to thirty days. However, recently, we've seen some backward movement toward that goal with the scheduling of inspections. Miriam's Kitchen has had numerous clients trying to lease up and inspections are being scheduled two to two and a Miriam's Kitchen has had numerous clients trying to lease up, and inspections are being scheduled two to two and a half weeks out rather than the five to seven days that we have under the MOU with DHS. Perhaps because, you know, we finally surged through those backed-up LRSP applications, and now we have a surge in inspections. But whatever the reason, steps need to be taken to get that timeline shortened, whether that be contracting more work out or allowing providers who have trained inspectors on their staff to do them themselves or something else. The individuals who are served by the local program are individuals who are chronically homeless. They are unsheltered or stay in low-barrier shelters. And before even being matched to a voucher, they have been homeless for a minimum of a year. To be sure, almost all of them were homeless, all of them were homeless for longer than that. And probably the average is multiple years of homelessness before they get matched to a voucher. They have waited long enough. And as we are all aware, the folks experiencing homelessness right now are more or less under attack in our city, even those who stay in shelter. So we really need to do everything we can as quickly as we can to move people through our system. And I'd also like to echo on the calls of some of my compatriots from other organizations. I'm also echoing that DCHA consider implementing a Continuum of Care preference to the Housing Choice Voucher Program as well. And I'll just leave it at that. Thanks very much. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Next, we have William Jordan. Jordan, star six to unmute yourself so we can hear your testimony.
Yes. Good afternoon. This is William Jordan. How are you all?
Good afternoon.
I have three things I wanted to touch on. The first is the Park Morton New Communities Project. I urge you all to audit that project from 2006 forward and evaluate whether it has met the goals and what can be done to improve the process. I know it hasn't. And of course, from my perspective, the TCB, the lead developer, should be removed. But I think if you do an audit and compare to what was promised to residents, you would agree. But without an audit, you know, it's just me advocating. But I know that that's the case. Second, the composition of the board. I have a deep problem, because I believe that the position of this board is that there should not be elected resident representation on the board. I think that sends a bad message to President Trump when it comes to home rule. I don't think you can have home rule, but on the board, deny home rule and represent residents properly. So I urge this board to pass a resolution requesting the council have at least the two elected members that I thought was in some version of the, of the bill. And then finally, the use of industrial revenue bonds. For me, this is a Ponzi scheme. Unless resident income at those properties increase to cover the debt, then if those individual resident's income doesn't increase, then it's a Ponzi scheme. You're kicking the problem down the line, supposedly solving an immediate problem, but you're creating a bigger problem. We've been doing this kind of borrowing against the future Ponzi scheme for years. And what we see now is that is the black families, particularly those in public housing or vouchers or et cetera, that pay the price. Because you're mortgaging their future and the future of their children to pay for decent housing today. And if their incomes don't increase, it's a Ponzi scheme. And so I know you're going to do it, but you gotta do something because it is a Ponzi scheme. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jordan.
Chairman, can I, two quick questions, just to clarify. So number one, I just want to confirm, I believe the document that the board endorsed to send to the council about the sort of the transition board, that I believe in that we recommended officially that there be voting resident board members, right? So I think that's one. And then number two, obviously, the legislation that the council passed included voting resident board member. Great. Okay. Thank you.
So Chair, that concludes the resident.
So let me just say, I appreciate the testimony that we heard today, again, from the board's perspective, about the cooperation between the DCHA, DC HA staff and the advocates as you're looking at these issues around homelessness, as well as the timeframe for getting people vouchers and getting them into units. So it's really good for us to hear that there's that kind of cooperation. And I want to thank Director Pettigrew and his staff for continuing to do that work. And I guess everybody's now looking forward to this meeting on the 17th. That's going to solve all our problems, right? Okay, thanks. Thanks, everyone. Thanks for coming this afternoon and providing testimony. Okay, now we're going to move on to our committee reports and resolutions. And I'm going to start with the Resident Services Committee, Commissioner Yaxton.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right. I am Denise Blackson, and I chair the Committee on Resident Services. As you know, this committee focuses on residents. And I work closely with the Office of Resident Services, resident leaders, as well as the resident themselves. During our last meeting on August 26th, we had a presentation from the Office of Capital Construction and Design, which was led by Dave, and we received updates on the Lexington Terrace power outage. Dave explained how the residents were well taken care of during this power outage and noted that Carolyn Punter and the PMO team assured, because that was one of my main concerns, how was it measured with the residents on this outage that took place for a year? So he assured me that PMO took care of the residents on their property and their concerns were addressed to satisfactory. During that meeting, Nicole noted that Yadi is being used to track that data and that the bond dollars will support the properties that needs actually redevelopment. I know sometimes that, you know, we have resident leaders on the meeting, and it's not a quick fix or like something that you can put a Band-Aid on. So this is one of the properties that needs more work with the, let me say, they got the generator straight, but they need more work in that area with Pepco and addressing outages. We also receive updates on my former property, which is Sibley Plaza Town Homes in the Sursum Quarter redevelopment. And we're learning that that property will be demolition next year, sometime around June 2026. These are just some of the things that was discussed on the Resident Service Committee. And more information will be coming to the board soon. We also received the update on the non-bond funded properties and learned the 14 components it takes to move the project along. So that's basically where we at with the Committee on Resident Services. Also, you know, I have an initiative under that committee, which is called the Block by Block, which is well received by the resident leaders who get to address their concerns with the directory team, which Carolyn Punter and her team does a very good job in addressing them concerns and getting back to residents with answers for the concerns that was brought forth. And our next committee meeting is on October 30th, 2025. And we're looking forward to it. Commissioner Sella, do you have anything to add?
You know, I really appreciated joining the meeting and hearing the questions from resident leaders in the different communities. I, it really helped me think about on, for the Committee on Operations and Administrative Services. We didn't get to the book, but there are, you know, residents are really interested in their property assessments and their property conditions. They're really interested in how quickly we are able to address work orders. And so I feel like we got a lot of feedback to help us focus in on the Committee on Operations and Administrative Services in an area that, you know, I'm usually so focused on the vouchers and especially LRSPs. So Anton, you might be pleased to hear that I will be shifting focus a little bit based in, in the Operations and Administrative Services Committee on the strength of what we are hearing and the feedback that we are getting from residents. I'm very happy with all of the work Carolyn has been doing and the responses. They're, you know, very direct, very to the point and addressing the issue. So I look forward to really digging into that area.
Commissioner Blackson and Commissioner Sella, could you mention how you all are working the, what you call it, to work? You know, to your committee meetings as, you know, there, as you have the meetings in terms of planning, what the, what that, what's the, sorry, what is the status of the program and kind of what's the steps that we're moving toward? And then I don't mean you have to do that now, but I'm just asking, because that seems like a big question for us from whatever to work and for everybody. So if maybe not here is the appropriate time to do that, we could have a special kind of report on that with our resident council and the folks that we're working with. Is that possible?
Sure. Sure, we can tell after.
Well, you mean, anything's possible.
Right. All things are possible. But I'm just, I just, you know, that's, I just, you know, that's something I haven't heard specifics about it, I guess.
You know, it was a part of the discussion when we did the Move to Work, when we were reviewing the Move to Work Plan and the goals for self-sufficiency or at least the priorities around self-sufficiency. And so maybe as a follow-up to that, we could do it in both Resident Services and, and then, or start with doing it at Resident Services. And if we need more time, since both Commissioner Blackson and I are also on Committee on Operations and Administrative Services, we can figure out between the two how to break up that work.
Okay. You know. I, thank you. We're focused a lot on these units, getting them leased up and getting the ball rolling there. You're doing a great job with that. I wonder if we could get some kind of metric or something that would say this is how much over a period of time that we're able to, that we've been able to actually do. You may be doing it. I'm sure you are.
We're tracking it some.
Just to record it, that's all. It would be helpful. I'm very interested in that. Here you go.
That's the hot seat. Spanish Inquisition is about to begin.
No, 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 this is all, we're all on the same page here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blackson, are you?
Yes, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Really, really appreciate the work that you're doing with the resident. Okay, next, we're going to, I'd like to move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Commissioner Reed, I know she had to leave for a minute. She's not back on yet. Okay, I don't know, maybe Commissioner Murphy can play, Commissioner Clay. So, so the resolution we have today from the Budget Committee is to approve the FY 2026 budget for the agency. As you know, our fiscal year begins October 1st, and so we need to have an approved budget, a budget approved by the board in order to operate beginning October 1st. So Commissioner Clay, do you want to?
So, thank you, Chair. So yes, we have a resolution in front of us related to the operating budget for fiscal 2026. And I know that Heather is here, and she's going to walk us through a little bit of it. One thing that I do want to say is the Audit and Budget Committee did meet Monday to kind of go through some details in the budget, and we got very comfortable with the numbers. I think that there was a minor change or there was an increase or that recognized the MOUs with DHS in the, in the revenue part of the budget. And so we did kind of comb through, look at line by line, look at some of the details, and then get comfortable with the budget. And so I will turn it over to Heather to talk a little bit more detail about it.
And I do have just a very brief presentation per Commissioner Reed's request, which she's not here. So I will be very brief. So we did want to tie the budget to the recovery plan. And so I just wanted to go over, you know, our three-year recovery plan real quick. Year one, we were focused on stabilization. Our focus was on urgent needs and critical operations. We're rolling into year two, so our focus is strengthening while we continue to stabilize and use the lessons learned from year one to, you know, make year two better. And then we'll be rolling in next year into year three, where we'll be focused on sustainability and growth. We'll be transitioning from recovery to forward-looking planning. And so overall, we have a couple of bullets on our agency-wide recovery plan that ties back to our budget. We have A2 and A8. A2 states prepare business and operational plans for all departments. That includes standard operating procedures and training for department staff. And then A8 has become an asset management company that ensures quality customer service positions its properties to provide a quality living environment and creates financially viable properties. So everything that we have done around the budget has been around these two goals. We've created budgeting procedures around the agency. I've got a budgeting staff that works with department heads every month, going over their expenses and reviewing budget to action. We're really, we've really been teaching everyone how to budget this year. And then also, you know, we've took a deep dive. We're doing site-based budgets. You guys are approving the overall budget, but we actually have 19 departments and 47 sites. So a total of 66 apartments and sites are rolled up into this operational budget. And then as part of my recovery plan for the OFM department, it includes implementation of financial management procedures to improve the reporting, budget analysis, and tracking of expenses. And so, of course, we've been doing that all throughout the year. And so today, we propose a total budget of $802,308,635. And that's comprised of our federal programs, local programs, and other sources. And HUD requires the Board of Commissioners to approve an operating budget annually. And so we bring that to you today. And we also have, you know, we have capital budgets as well, but those are presented separately when we have, when we have capital projects. So those are not a part of the operating budget. So again, I've just got a slide breaking down the revenue. We've got federal programs, local programs, other income sources showing the total revenue of $802,308,635. And then our expenses broken down, we've got administrative tenant services, utilities, maintenance and operational expenses, and then anything that doesn't fall in those buckets. And our total expenses are $801,029,98. And so we're bringing this resolution in front of you today. And that's the end of my brief presentation. I've also shared a Colorado-Columbia RAD budget with the board. That budget is in the total operating numbers, and we are required, because they are a RAD property, to have that also in our board approval, but that is, that is included in our total operational budget today.
So the bottom line is we are projecting positive net
Yes, sir.
Wasn't that the right word? Positive net income of how much?
Two million, two oh five, six thirty-seven.
Okay, so positive was always good. All right, so, okay. So any, any further discussion? I'd just like to compliment the staff and the budget staff and you, Director. This is a very complicated budget and it was a budget that was hard to figure out before you. That's a nice way to put it. You have made, you've brought this to a place of real good understanding and accountability and very, very grateful for that. This is, we don't have this budget right, we don't have anything right. So, thank you, thank you very much. So, so with that, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 25-27. And that's to approve the DC housing operating budget for fiscal year 2026. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner, before we vote, just one minor, minor thing I just wanted to get on the record. So this is so, but it is related to the Colorado Columbia budget. And it just, I, I know, it was, the budget is projecting a pretty significant rent increase in the, in the property from next year over this year. And I, I think I got clarification, but I wonder if we can just get on the record sort of why we felt comfortable that the, the, the income is going to go up so much.
Yes, sir. So right now we have quite a bit of vacancies. And so we anticipate on leasing up.
Great.
They're being renovated, so the vacancies are offline. I mean, not often, but they're being renovated, so.
They'll be more attractive.
Yes.
That's great. Okay, all right, that, that made me feel comfortable.
Thank you.
All right, sorry.
So it's been moved and seconded for the other reason, twenty-five dash twenty-seven. Any further discussions? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Ronnie Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Teresa Sella.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennifer Reed. Commissioner Chris Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Jim Dickerson.
Yes.
Commissioner Leroy Clay.
Yes.
Commissioner Denise Blackson.
Yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Skinner.
Yes.
Resolution's approved.
Okay, thank you. Are you finished with the buzzer committee?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. All right, next we're going to go to the capital projects, capital projects.
We briefly discussed the Berry Flats. If you would have taken up by the DC Housing Solutions Board, just as a heads up to us, when the board had already approved that earlier in the summer. So there was no need for the, the committee to go over it, but I appreciated the heads up. And it was, it was smarter of the, of the staff to remind us that we had already approved it through the board. So there were really three resolutions that we talked about today. And I don't know, Director, which grace, which order do we want to go in? And I think we've got Capper Judiciary Square and then the RAD conversions on the IRB properties.
So I'm going to present, I can present to two of those. So why don't we start with the Capper Townhomes?
Perfect.
So, request is to approve Resolution 2523 to authorize the acquisition of a limited partner and special limited partner interest in Capper Residential One LP. Earlier this morning, DC Housing Solutions voted to create those entities so that you can take this action today and allow the project to acquire the LP interest. There any additional questions or further clarification I can provide?
Benefit of, of those online.
Sure.
Can you just explain just a couple more sentences about what this is?
All right.
But you know, that easy.
The purpose of this resolution is to authorize DCHA to do two things. Proceed with acquiring the tax credit investor and special limited partner interest through DCHS in the Capper Townhomes Phase One project, which I can speak on in just a minute. And the transaction will cost one dollar plus seven hundred, seven thousand five hundred dollars, which is the associated transaction cost. The purpose of this is for DCHA to acquire the tax credit investor's interest in this property. Fifteen-year compliance period has ended and the investor wants to exit the partnership, so.
And where, where is the property?
Property is located in the Navy Hard neighborhood. Hundred and thirty, excuse me, thirty-nine.
Nine or. And then there's plenty of market rate there.
Yeah, it has nothing to do.
So, so when this transaction is done, DCHA through its subsidiary, DCHS, will fully own this property.
The thirty-nine, yeah.
And this is similar to other projects that we've dealt with when the tax credit is up. The one difference here from, say, Henson Ridge, which we did previously, was that we didn't, we're not immediately resyndicating it or recapitalizing it because the property is in pretty good shape. And I think what we've been told by the staff is that we'll take, we'll be able to complete the transaction and then take some time to assess where things stand and decide what, what additional work might need to be done. But it doesn't seem to be in a, in an urgent condition or a condition that would require urgent action. So the committee was supportive of bringing this to the full board.
Okay. So this is Resolution 25-23. And can we get a motion to approve?
I moved.
Second.
Second.
Hey, any further discussions? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Denise Blackson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ronnie Harris.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jim Dickerson.
Yes.
Commissioner Chris Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Leroy Clay.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennifer Reed. Commissioner Teresa Sella.
Yes.
And Chairman Skinner.
Yes.
Resolution's approved.
Judiciary House, I always called Judiciary Square, excuse me, Judiciary House.
All right, so this resolution is Resolution 2524 and to enter into an exclusive right to negotiate a contract for property management services with Presidential One LLC to manage the Judiciary House RAD PBV and LI-Tech converted property. And I'll explain a little bit about the purpose of this resolution. The goal is to enter into a contract with this, with this company that was selected through our procurement process and Jean can speak to the specifics of the procurement itself. And this is part of DCHA self-developing this property. Judiciary House is a two hundred and sixty-three unit high-rise building. And we're currently in the pre-development and financing phase and we'll be using borrowers and tax credits and allocation of tax-exempt bonds and a two-twenty-one D four loan. So we need a property management company that knows how to work with units with those various levels of subsidy and compliance requirements.
So, so this is the property where we were doing in-place renovations and moving people around? Is that, that's correct, right?
And this is expanding that work.
Yeah. Yeah, we had started that work, then we decided we were going to, I guess, finish that work, but also convert it to.
Well, predates us, then some work had happened in the unit, some of the units were already renovated. So when we came, yes, we knew it needed to be repositioned. Also, there's application in the Housing Finance Agency for tax credits. So yes, this renovation will be the entire, the rest of the units and then looking at the other units to do a lot of infrastructure work that needs to be done for preservation purposes for the long term.
What, what about the common areas?
That, yeah, that will all be included in this. This is a comprehensive renovation of the entire, entire property.
And who's, who's the current property manager?
We are. We currently manage it and looking at, again, this is negotiations for third party. If, once the deal, I'm not going to say if, once the deal converts and closes through RAD PBVs and through tax credits. So just all the complicated layers and working with the different partners that are coming in. They were looking for us to have third-party management of that property.
I will say the committee was a little puzzled by this proposal at first initially. And then we came to the understanding that this is sort of an expression of good faith in a way to ensure that we can get this project financed and going. And so because it is showing sort of a purposefulness of how we intend to go forward on the property. And the other thing that was worth noting is that this is a, this is an authorization to enter into negotiations and that the, this is not an authorization of a contract that that would, presuming we can reach an agreement, that would again come to the board, presumably not to the Capital Projects Committee, or would it?
It would, well, I mean, DM, the owner of the project, that which would be controlled by DC Housing Solutions, our affiliate, will actually be the one who enters into the ultimate contract. So the, it'll probably go to the affiliate, to DCHS.
Would it also go to administration though?
Some subcommittee, yes.
Which subcommittee? I mean, I think it'd be capital project, I mean, I think, I think it would probably be capital projects in connection with the closing of that.
That, that the board will see this contract, assuming it is able to be negotiated, that's my name.
Yeah.
So, so I just wanted to say, I, you know, Nicole, you alluded to the fact that some work had been done before the, the pedigree of administration. And I actually acquired this property with Councilmember White maybe two years ago. And there was real concern on part of the residents about how the renovations were going. Again, as, as typical, it was just too slow and taking too long. So I'm glad to see we've revved this up and we're going to really focus and get a, a high-quality renovation done on this property.
And now I can walk back in that building.
Yeah, right.
Because if I go to residents looking at me like, look, man, you got to get moved.
So this is an important step along that journey and the committee was equally supportive of bringing it to the full board for consideration.
Okay, so this is Resolution 25-24. And can we get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a, a vote.
Chris Murphy.
Yes.
Teresa Sella.
Yes.
Denise Blackson.
Yes.
Jennifer Reed. Ronnie Harris.
Sorry, having a hard time getting off mute, yes.
It's okay. Jim Dickerson.
Yes.
Leroy Clay.
Yes.
Chairman Skinner.
Yes.
Resolution's approved.
Do you not see that I am here? You haven't called my name for none of the votes.
Oh, we did not see you, Commissioner Burbidge.
I've been here the whole time.
I'm sorry, just going to ask her. I saw you on there.
We did have her here for the roll call when we first started the meeting.
I did, but my phone was acting up. I've been here the whole period, my fault, my phone fault, no problem.
Make sure it's reflected.
Okay, right. Okay, then we have one other resolution that represents the Cap Projects Committee, twenty-five, twenty-six, dealing with the application for the RAD application for the projects that are going to be.
Exactly.
Right, so David, David, you off mute?
He's there, I just, yeah.
You guys could hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, we're hearing.
All right, this resolution is to reposition the nine properties that we will be funding the renovations with industrial revenue bonds. Lincoln Riches, Lincoln, Fort Lincoln, James Apartments, Clarish House, James Creek, Lincoln Heights, Knox Hill, Sibley Plaza, Hopkins, and Syfax. The, in order to submit the application for the conversion to RAD, we needed to consult with residents at each one of these properties. Over the months of July and August, we had at least two meetings with the residents themselves and an additional meeting with the resident council for each one of the properties. Very informative, a lot of information we shared with the residents also, as well as the council, a overview of the renovations that would be included in the scope for their properties. Once the, given that we already consulted with the residents, we bring it to you for the board vote so that we could submit next month an application to move forward with the conversion to RAD.
So, thank you, David. So the committee discussed these couple issues to flag, just the timing. Went away, the, once upon a time, we had discussed going to market potentially as early as the end of the year and it looks like that will get extended into early next year, which is, which is okay. And I think just worth saying. And then other folks on the committee did want us to just ask or did ask the staff sort of, how are we approaching relocation for current residents? And the staff clarified there is a consultant on board who's helping to think that through. And as much as possible, I know there's a plan to consider onsite options to minimize disruption. So if that's possible, that will be an advantage or an opportunity we'll take advantage of. So, but ultimately, the committee had its questions answered and was supportive of bringing this to the full board.
Any other comments or questions? So this is Resolution 25-26 to authorize submission to HUD a RAD application for the nine properties to be modernized using bond funds. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We'll have a roll call vote.
Yeah. Commissioner Rosa Burbidge.
Your first answer.
Thank you. Commissioner Jim Dickerson.
Yes.
Commissioner Leroy Clay.
Yes.
Commissioner Chris Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennifer Reed. Commissioner Teresa Sella.
Yep.
Commissioner Ronnie Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Denise Blackson.
Yes.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Chairman Skinner.
Yes.
The resolution's approved.
Okay, anything else on capital projects?
Unless, unless other committee members have anything you want to add.
Thank you very much. And then last but not least, we'll go to the Operations and Administrative Services Committee. I don't know that we ever, we mentioned it in the last board meeting that was in July, not August, right? That Commissioner Jones, who chaired this committee, had resigned. So she's no longer on the board. And we did not have, did we have a vice chair that committee? We did not have a vice chair of, of that committee. But Commissioner Sella has been filling in. And she informed me that Commissioner Harris is going to take a leading role.
No, I, I, I tried to recruit Commissioner Harris, but.
So that was, that was you, not.
Me making an effort to recruit leadership. I, I do better in a supporting role.
So, so as we move forward, remember, the board's going to be reconfigured and we're going to have to look at the committees again. So going forward, we'll probably have an opportunity to, to reconstruct the committees. So, so for today's meeting, I'm going to ask Commissioner Sella to, to present for the Operations Committee. And there, there are what, three resolutions, I think, that, that, that committee talked about? And let, let's start with I think is the, the easiest one first. And that's to renew our insurance.
That literally is the fastest one. Definitely start with that one.
That's Resolution 25, that's twenty-nine.
And Amy, am I deferring to you?
Sure, I can present it. So this is a resolution to renew our insurance policies with the Housing Authority Insurance Group. This includes property, automobile, blood, employed lawyers, cyber liability, and.
employed lawyers, cyber liability and nonprofit management liability as well as directors and officers insurance, as well as a few other, a few other items.
So this this covers literally everything.
Covers our properties, our board, our staff. You know, right. So I mean, we we do need insurance. It is also a head requirement that we have insurance. But yes, so it's the the total premium amount is about four point five million. Insurance is expensive these days. So I will, you know, and this is this is a bit of an increase from last year due to insurance increase, you know, just to inflate. Well, I mean, there's there's been a lot of, you know, issues throughout the insurance industry rate that have led to higher. Yeah, so.
So so would you talk a little bit about the Housing Authority Insurance Group, what that is?
Sure. So the housing. Only for us. It's only for housing authorities. It's a group that was, you know, sort of formed by housing authorities and is essentially run by housing authorities with professional insurance staff that provides, you know, that that provides a series of insurance, you know, insurance types to to just the housing authorities. There are sometimes coverages that they do not provide or that but but they help us find additional coverages that, you know, might be sort of outside their umbrella, but but, you know, that we would that we would want as well.
Cooperative, I call it.
Yeah, I mean, it's 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 like, yes, it's it's a it's a cooperative type type insurance, but I think it's a pretty unique situation.
That's what I wanted you to.
Yeah.
Talk about.
Yeah.
And exactly for this reason, there was basically no discussion. Amy explained, we said, okay.
So given that, let's let's.
Just out of curiosity, how much are the premiums going up?
Um, in the aggregate, it's about two or three hundred thousand total. So not as much percentage wise compared to the total cost, but it's it's you know, it's still. Yeah. Sometimes you see bills and you're just like, wow, insurance, you know, I can't believe how much insurance costs, but that is, that is the world. Yes, yes.
Okay, so. Resolution twenty five dash twenty nine, a motion to approve.
Twenty nine or twenty two?
Oh, no.
We gotta prove it. I'm ready.
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a roll call vote.
Sure.
Resolution twenty five dash twenty nine.
Commissioner Jennifer Reed? Commissioner Teresa Sella?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosa Burbidge?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Leroy Clay?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronnie Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Jim Dickerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Denise Blackson?
Yes.
Commissioner Chris Murphy? And Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Okay. So we have two other resolutions. One dealing with the the ACOG and the other dealing with our moving to work.
Move to work is faster, so we can, I think. Officially.
If you say so.
So res- resolution resolution twenty five dash twenty two is approved is to approve amendments to our moving to work plan for fiscal year twenty twenty six. And this annual work plan will allow us to do some some new things, different things and to stay stay in good standing with HUD.
Right, so in in during the summer, the board approved and we submitted a moving to work annual plan. As you noted, we we realized we had a couple of things we needed to amend. Most of them pertain to the bond financing. The the resolution that was approved and by, you know, during the capital committee discussion that authorized several rad applications is related to most of these amendments to the plan. We also need to put the properties in our plan as as, you know, sort of rad amendments. So so there are, so this would amend our plan to allow us to submit rad applications for Highland additions, Hopkins, James Creek, Lincoln Heights, Stoddard Terrace, Syfax and Woodland Terrace. And then it also has a change that would that we think will help with many of our properties, which is we would be seeking a modification to our project based voucher authorizations to allow us to do work on P V V units, on project based voucher units within two years of the effective date of a half contract. There's some quirky language in the law that might prevent us from doing work on our properties and we do not want to be prevented from that. So we, there was a public hearing to discuss this. And comments have been, you know, have been addressed from from that hearing as well.
Further discussion from the committee?
Yeah, for our committee, this was a really important opportunity to remind ourselves and to learn more about the key features of rad, including the fact that, you know, that there was this quirky aspect of the language or the law that we need to be working around. We did, as part of that conversation, talk about the fact that we are moving from fixed rents for some people to rents that are going to be responding to their income, so will be set at thirty percent income. And so we talked quite a bit about what the communication for tenants was going to be. This was significant concern for Commissioner Blackson and Commissioner Harris that they wanted to make sure we were clear with people about what they can anticipate. Commissioner Harris really talked about financial planning support to help people really understand how their rent is going to change and making sure that people see that concretely, the calculations and example of it, so that they are well prepared for the transition. And Commissioner Harris, especially if I didn't amplify the right parts of that, please jump in.
No, you're doing good. Thank you.
So those, you know, those were questions and concerns that we talked about just to help improve how we are working with residents. But otherwise, we did not have an issue with this this resolution. We did ask why all nineteen properties were not included, because all nineteen properties will will be.
Nine?
No, nineteen, because it's both it's both phases, right? We would have.
Some properties were already included in there. And this just need to capture any missing one from the first nine. So if any are missing from the we'll go back each year. We'll have opportunity to put those in there.
Yeah, so it's like eight out of the nine that's listed and we're like, where's the other one? It are it already.
It already.
Yeah.
Okay, which which one was that? That's curious. That it already been?
Which one was missed?
Two, yeah, sorry. You know, like as we were going through.
Okay, were the two, sorry, never.
Previous.
Not a significant.
Not at all.
So resolution twenty five twenty two is to approve submitting amendments to our moving to work plan. So can we get a motion to approve that?
Motion.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Twenty five dash twenty two.
Commissioner Leroy Clay?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronnie Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennifer Reed? Commissioner Jim Dickerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Denise Blackson? Commissioner Denise Blackson? Commissioner Rosa Burbidge?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Chris Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Teresa Sella?
Yes.
And Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Okay, great. We're making great progress.
Yes, we are.
So so the next resolution is twenty five dash twenty five, which is to authorize publication of the ninth emergency and proposed regulations of the District Columbia Health Authorities Admissions and Continued Occupancy Plan, otherwise known as the ACOG. And I must say, we've had a lot of discussion about this. Several of the residents were were advocates testified today about the ACOG and wanting to include a a preference for admissions to public housing as well as a preference for the for the voucher program. And this resolution just deals with the public housing properties, not not the vouchers. So we'll move to the vouchers as as we consider the administrative plan, which still has to come. But again, this is the ninth emergency and I just have, I want to stay upfront, stayed upfront, kind of my position on this. This is the ninth emergency resolution and we need to get off this emergency track and have a a permanent version of of the ACOG. One, and then secondly, I believe, and staff correct me if I'm wrong, in terms of the the HUD findings from twenty twenty two, remember that, to eighty five findings or whatever the number was? The the ACOG is one of the final things so that we can close out all of those those findings. Are the two things remaining. So so I'd like us to be able to to approve this today to get off, get us off the emergency track. And then secondly, we can say to HUD that we've adopted an ACOG and we can check that box as term in terms of those findings from from that report. But I know that there've been a lot of discussions, as I mentioned a minute ago, about including a homeless preference. And I I would say that I I am certainly amenable as a board member to discussing how we can do that. I know the staff has had meetings with with the advocates, with Commissioner Silla's organization. And there've been, I I'm not sure how specific you've gotten in terms of proposal for how that might work. But I think I can say on behalf of the board and on behalf of the staff that the agency is committed to working with Commissioner Silla and her her organization as well as the other advocates to see if we can come up with a solution that moves forward in terms of being able to assist in this, with which really now is a crisis in terms of, you know, what the feds are doing and just, you know, moving people out. Knowing that, you know, we we can't do anything very quickly. So, you know, we can't help with the people who are being moved off the street right now, because it's gonna take some time. We gotta go through the process. Essentially amend the ACOG once we approve it and then figure out all the the details and the mechanics of how we get people in and so forth. But again, I just want to say on the record that the board is committed to working with the advocates on coming up with a solution that addresses to some degree homelessness.
So I really appreciate that commitment and I appreciate that, you know, it's that everybody else from the I C H who's also deeply concerned about this has an opportunity to hear that commitment confirmed to them. So thank you so much for that, Chair. I I want to address just maybe like two two aspects of what you highlighted and then talk about the discussion that took place at the committee, because I think that's also relevant to the other comments and feedback, especially from Daniel, and I'm so sorry that I'm bad with last names. I think it's. Yes, yes. And Daniel, I'm really bad with names, but I very much appreciate your participation, your consistency in giving us feedback and.
You see everyone.
And the piece about communication, I think, is really important. So I do want to spend a little bit of time about that because that's really pertinent. We we have to get off the emergency track, right? Absolutely agreed. And we do, I think, have, because of the way the public comment for HUD works and then the local public comment works, we have opportunities as we have for the ninth time to adopt something as as an emergency and have it be go into effect immediately. So what I'm hoping that we'll do is that we will work through not just the homeless preference related concerns and questions, but also some of the other outstanding questions and comments that have come up so that we can propose something as an emergency. Obviously, I don't think it's gonna happen the next board meeting. I think we're gonna need at least two months to work things through, but I'm hoping that at the latest by our November board meeting, before we break for Christmas, before the holidays, that we will be able to deliver on homeless preference and the outstanding comments and questions. So I'm hoping that that's the right track for moving in this direction. Now about communication and our committee meeting. There is a way in which staff are working diligently and after all of the questions, after all of the requests for updates that staff delivered to, at least myself, I don't know if other committee members also had the opportunity to review updated documents, staff is doing a lot of work, a lot of work and really moving the ball forward in directions that we do want them. So a lot of the details, once we were able to look into it, I thought were very exemplary and exactly the sorts of things that we should be doing. But I have to say, like, we need to figure out how to communicate better. For example, when we got the resolution, it wasn't even on the face of it clear to us as committee members that what we were doing was updating the ACOG. It really felt like we were just extending the last you know, the last version of it, the older version of it. And so it felt a little overwhelming when we realized the extent of the updates that were going to have to be adopted a week later, right? So that was that blindsided us, I mean, at least me, you know, let me speak personally, but I I got that same sentiment from the other commissioners and similarly from when we I was able to advocate for us to make sure everybody on the board was clear as part of the Board Education Symposium that this was an update and was going to look different. And so I can say that even from the reaction of Commissioner Burbidge at our discussion that it, you know, we need a little bit better communication around what kind of updates to anticipate. And I think the only outstanding product from that we requested that I think is really key and important, not just to us, but also to community at large is a red line so that people can see exactly what changed and making that available on our website, making that available to the board. So I can't speak on what was outstanding, because I think that that was really important, really briefly. So obviously, the homeless preference. I'm very grateful that Caroline called me almost immediately afterwards to vet at least one idea, one option for doing this as quickly as possible. Waitlist updates and how families can be reinstated, what that process looks like. Both from the perspective of how families are contacted. I have some questions and concerns. I've added some comments. Our committee discussed that quite a bit. That was Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Blackson and myself. Yes.
So I'm just trying to follow. I haven't been in this. This one. So waitlist, we're talking about homeless preference.
No, now.
Waitlist. I'm just trying to follow and not get confused here. What do you, what do you mean? What's, what's, where are you headed with this? I mean, I guess I I don't want to get clear that I'm not not misunderstanding.
Right, and I really appreciate the connection to homelessness that you made, even in your question. So we are moving towards site based waitlists for our for our properties.
Yes.
Yep. And it looked like one for properties where there's high demand, that we're going to leave those that those are going to be open for a limited time period so that we are not overwhelmed by applications and that the selection will be on a lottery basis. For properties that have lower demand, those might be open on a more continuous basis and the applications. and the applications would be processed in the order that they were received. Did I understand that and summarize that correctly?
It's all a randomized selection, but if there's a high-demand property, those property waitlists will be closed. And those who are harder to fill, we can leave those open for a longer period. Yes.
So the issue, the one issue that was identified was the policies around contacting families before they are dropped from the waitlist. And family stands for households, whether you're single, whether um.
Gotcha.
Um, the there, the the way the language is written, and maybe this is my understanding, and this is why um I really would appreciate additional conversation, but I don't want to hold up the um process of adopting the updated um uh ACOG is um uh right now, families can only be reinstated if the withdrawal and lack of response was related to circumstances beyond the family's control. And I want to be clear, especially when families are in crisis because they're experiencing homelessness or housing instability. Whether something is within their control or not is something that's very dicey to evaluate. And I would very much appreciate if there was flexibility around reinstating families if they present within that six-month period and they inform the housing authority that the reason why they are out of contact with the housing authority is because they were experiencing homelessness and especially if that can be documented in HMIS. Um, apart, now contacting waitlist on families, there is some itemization of how that's going to happen. Um, it lists the ACOG at least as far as I can, I'm reading it and I'm understanding it. Housing Authority is contacting via email and phone number. I want to emphasize that for people experiencing homelessness, it's really important to include their case managers as point of contact. And also that we have to figure out how to manage the waitlist in a way that allows us to bump records so that we can identify when someone is experiencing homelessness and you have an alternative method for contacting them, leveraging homeless services infrastructure. Um, I think that isn't anticipated anywhere or discussed anywhere, but especially if we're going to have a homeless preference, I would very much like for us to be thinking about those things. Again, we don't have to hold things up. Um, this can be a discussion. Pets is the third issue. Um, you know, there's um, there's a limit to two pets and there's a limit on the types of pets. Um, I'm just really curious and want to learn more about the decisions that the housing authority is making. I trust and believe that some of why you're limiting types has to do with your property management experience, but it is worth a discussion to really understand now that I've seen the details of the comments. Um, it just, we just didn't have enough time to like really talk about that. So those are the issue areas I'd like.
What were the changes that you made regarding pets and the the old version versus what we're proposing to adopt today?
They were, I believe they were, they were not allowed in all properties under the old version. And just to be clear, a pet is different from an animal that is needed for a disability as an emotional support, right? So a service animal or that sort of thing, that's not a pet, right? So you could have a pet, you could have an emotional support animal separate, even if pets were not allowed. But this um, this basically would allow for um as, but but Commissioner Silla expressed what the new, the new policy would be, which is that, you know, you could have pets throughout the um. Yeah, and 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 I do think that we've received feedback from, I know we received it one of the block-by-blocks I went to where we discussed the ACOG, where, you know, I think sometimes there's concerns about whether people are actually following the rules about their pets, which is not the, you know, which is, they're outlined in the ACOG, but we just need to enforce as well. And I think that's, if if I've understood some of the concerns that have been expressed, it's, some of that is is just enforcement and then also understanding that people may have emotional support animals that are not pets. So they're not subject to the same restrictions, right?
And how do we? He was asking, what was the distinction? What was the change?
So that was, I think it went from from a limit on pets to, and then we also changed the fee structure to make it.
So, so what I remember from when I first came on the board was we had a policy of quote, no pets, but we didn't enforce it. I mean, so you know, a lot of people have pets. And then we decided that decided that we would um uh allow pets and then grand grandfather in the people that already had pets. But going forward, people would have, there'd be a new process for for people to, I guess, apply to have a pet, have to pay a fee and so forth.
From the summary chart, it looked like um only elderly and aging locations and grandfathered pets were allowed. Now we're allowing pets at all properties, which is great, right? Like, our folks have pets, they should have pets. Um, but there's a limit to two pets, and there's also, we're not defining everything that's allowed as a pet in DC law. We're not recognizing all of those options, like lizards and guinea pigs. Like, we're the two examples in the comments.
Alligators.
I'm pretty sure alligators and tigers are prohibited regardless of uh uh uh.
There is a DC local code on exotic.
Yes.
Species, yes?
Yes.
So you cannot have.
Nisha, this guy had a tiger?
Yep, I remember those. They discovered it.
Too long ago.
I feel like they've discovered alligators in public housing somewhere too.
So this is moving in the right direction, right? It's allowing for pets everywhere, which, you know, um and but and we have been hearing concerns about pets. And I think it has to do with how we manage our properties and whether we, you know, can even think about like having dog parks where where dogs can run around unleashed, right? So I think there's some additional conversations we could have around pets to really get at what the issues are. But we, I think we need to have the conversation.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if other committee members have um additional feedback or input that they want to highlight, um including whether they're in support of moving forward. We haven't had a chance to.
Talk.
To talk, yeah. Um, Commissioner Blackman? Commissioner Harris?
It's Commissioner Harris. I'm I'm comfortable um with moving forward. Um, as long as we're all on the same page, you know, in regards to following back up, coming back to the table um in reference to the initiative for the homeless, so we can get that going.
And to, so, so just so we're clear, Amy, what's, what's the process? If we adopt this today, then we have to come back and do amendments? And then we got to publish it for sixty days or thirty days or something. So what what is the process?
So it's similar to what we've already gone through, which is we have to put this out. We have to put something out for a minimum of thirty days for a HUD public comment period. Okay, which is we, we, for the, for a ACOG change, right? So we already, we we lengthened our HUD comment period on this ACOG that we're discussing right now. Um, from, it ran from early March to uh July one, because we had a request to extend it beyond thirty days. So if we adopt this revised ACOG that responds to comments, if we adopt that today, um, it will be adopted as emergency and proposed regulations, but it'll be the final emergency and proposed because we'll be able to then, after another thirty-day period for DC law, we will come back to the board for final approval and we'll be out of the emergency cycle. We can also.
But we're finished with the HUD process.
We're finished with the HUD process. But if we want to add a preference, we need to start a HUD process, minimum thirty days. And then because we're still in emergency mode, there would be another thirty days for the the DC process because of the, I I know, because they can't run concurrently. And they can't run consecutively unless we're out of the emergency. So there's, depending on how long the preference comes to develop, takes to develop, there's a possibility that we could shorten into one thirty-day comment period for both DC and HUD if the board has already adopted this ACOG that we're talking about today as final regs. So but but there there's still, but the upshot is, we still need to, we just, we need to do a new public comment period for a preference because it's such a substantial change to what we've been doing. And it's to to admissions.
So can that part be done? I'm sorry, can the public um piece be done while we wait? Which is looking to be like sixty days for the original um.
I don't know, um, uh Commissioner Silla was saying, we, we have to have the meetings, you know, with the advocates and the staff and work out the language for what the preference is going to be. That's going to take some time, you know, a month, couple, okay.
But what I'm asking is, we still have to bring it to the table, but so then we, we can't bring it to the table publicly before we have what we actually want to do, because that's still going to take time.
Yeah, we, we need to, we will, we will hammer out that we will agree upon the language. We will put that out for public comments.
Okay.
Accept public comments, right? And we will review it, and we may change the language based on the comments received. And then bring it back to the board to approve. And depending on where we are with respect to emergency or final regs on this ACOG, it might be, you know, the, the, the nature of that approval might be as emergency and proposed regs, or it might be as, it might be a little bit different. So, but the upshot is there's still more public comment, Commissioner.
When, when the public comments start, periods start, thirty days for the district law? Does that start today? Does it start like month? Is that?
For, for when, for the, for the, for this one, it starts, it starts upon approval today.
So it starts today. So thirty days from today, at our next board meeting, we would be able to finalize this.
Yeah.
And so then if we made a change, that would all, that could go through only one thirty-day process because the.
If it's already final, if we wait to put it out until the, this has been adopted as final, then there's only one, then we can do simultaneous public comment periods, I think, and there's.
Final on the next board meeting, right?
Yes.
We can adopt the the revised ACOG, right? Without the preference, right?
Well, if, if we were to do any, anything, it wouldn't make sense to do anything before this is adopted as final anyway. Because sixty days versus thirty days, it kind of.
It, yeah, and it'll be adopted as final in thirty days. Therefore, in thirty days, if Nicole and I, uh or Carolyn and I work magic and come back with a homeless preference, we could then consider that adopted and um, yeah, move forward.
I, I will, I will caution you that I think we are a couple days short of thirty days between today and the next board meeting.
Uh, got you.
So I, I'm just sorry, I was getting a text from someone because I was just trying to do the math on my, on my uh, on my computer. But so, so I mean, this.
Either way, we can work.
Yeah, but so, but but the upshot is, depending on how quickly we move on the homeless preference, we can get it out for public comment. And and frankly, we can, you know, really be working internally through the mechanics of of what it looks like so that we're not losing time, you know, I mean, so that we're not losing time.
There are, yeah, they're already doing that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, um, any other comments from the commissioners who are online? Commissioners here?
I just want to say, I'm very supportive of moving forward today and also equally supportive of moving toward forward with conversations around the homeless preference. And I I obviously want to make sure, like everyone else does, I'm sure, get the balance right between respecting the waiting list and the homeless preference. I think we can do that. Um, so, yeah.
Okay, um, so this is Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-five, uh to authorize publication of proposed ACOG. Can I get a um motion to approve?
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Uh, we have a roll call vote.
Sure. Commissioner Teresa Silla?
Yep.
Commissioner Chris Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronnie Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Jenny, Jennifer Reed? Commissioner Jim Dickerson?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Denise Blackson? Commissioner Lee Roy Clay?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosa Burbage?
Yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Okay. All right, so uh first of all, any, any other um uh items or comments from the operations team?
No. Through the resolutions, we didn't have time for the rest of the board.
Okay, uh, well, well, uh, thank you, uh, everyone, real. I appreciate the thoughtful comments and the w- willingness to to move forward with some of these issues. Um, so is any other, uh, you know, we have this initiative time, the commission didn't have any, any other issues they want to bring up? They're just running a little late.
I'm, I'm very fast. Um, over the summer, I had an opportunity to attend a couple of the rebuilding, the community events. I just want to give hats off to to you all. I, I think they're awesome events. There's all kinds of activities for the kids, the bands, the music, food, everything. So um really just fantastic events and.
All the one big block part, that's how it was.
Yeah, yeah.
So all we did was add, add services to it.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for coming out.
And just in general, thank you for adding those things to our calendars also. Uh, now I see all kinds of things happening. And I, I appreciate.
You finally got it. You finally got it. After the whole year.
I see as another suit event coming up Thursday and Friday. So uh, so that's great. So, so thank you for all of that.
Okay, um, so thank you. And uh, just one announcement, that is for our next board meeting, Board of Commissioners meeting, is going to be held on Wednesday, October the eighth, twenty twenty-five, starting at one PM. Uh, and that'll be held via Zoom. Information regarding viewing or participating in the meeting, in the meeting live can be found uh on the DCHA website, uh D, which is DCHousing dot. Okay, with that, uh, I'll entertain a motion for adjourned meeting.
So move the second?
Second.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned at three oh six PM. Thank you, everybody.
You.